I call this meeting to order. Please rise for pleads of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. I know. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jim Littleton from the Holly Springs United Methodist Church. Welcome back Pastor, wherever you are. There you are. Good to see you.
Thank you Mayor, for this invocation opportunity. Let us pray. Almighty God, in this season of Thanksgiving, we ask you give us a moment to pause and reflect on all the goodness that we've received. Help us to remember and give thanks for our nation, for our state, and for this community of Holly Springs. We ask God, you give all of us, God, who have the ability and the means to help others, the opportunity to lend a helping hand to our neighbors. God, we ask that you continue to bless our leadership, bless our first responders, bless and be with all of our city workers who do all these wonderful acts of service and work behind the scenes to make Holly Springs the place it is today. God, continue to be with our schools, our teachers, continue to be with our citizens, and may you continue to make Holly place this place you want it to be. God, in all things, we give thanks and we praise you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you Pastor. Item number four, adjustment approval of November 21st, 2017 meeting agenda, Mayor Protem.
Motion to adopt the November 21st, 2017 meeting agenda with no changes.
Second. Motion been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Item number five is public comment period, and we're going to call Jackie Miller to the stand. Hi Jackie, I haven't seen you for awhile. Name and address please, you know the drill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity, council members. Jackie Miller, 112 Hickory Glen Lane, Holly Springs. So I'm using this opportunity tonight, I'll keep it short because I do intend to come back in December to file a request to action, to be a cyclist. The topic is on cycling safety within the town of Holly Springs. Due to tragic and terrible events more recent in our cycling community in our neighboring town of Cary, a group of us got together and we really feel like we need to ask for more help to try and keep us safe on the roads. And so, we actually had some videos professionally produced by Rick Sullivan, and I would like to play one for you tonight to highlight some of the dangers that we do come across. So hopefully if I can get this right, I'm going to play it for you. My name is Jackie. I am a sister, a wife, a daughter, an aunt, a friend, and a coach. I ride my bike because it makes me happy and it keeps me strong. I ride my bike with friends because it's fun and we enjoy the beauty of the area that we live in. But when somebody yells at me from their car or throws a Coke bottle at me, it makes me scared and it makes me sad. I, like you, have a right to be on the road too. I have the right to take up the size of one vehicle if I needed to. Let's follow the law. Please share the road and let's all be safe. So we actually had 12 of those done. Let me see, how do I get rid of this? I don't want the others to start playing.
My name's Maria, I'm a speech therapist.
Yeah, as you can see, we had 12 of these done.
Escape.
Escape.
Mm-hmm. Then close now. There you go. Yes. Close off now, there you go. Minimize that one please, just a little. There you go.
And then.
Now, left click and you'll be at the next slide.
Thank you. Thanks, Jody. Yeah, so we had 12 of those videos done, and I just want to credit Rick Sullivan, who's a great friend of ours and also a cyclist who works for PBS, he's a producer. So really, I just wanted to bring to light that there is a high death rate, not only in the USA but in North Carolina. And over time, we have had some new numbers brought about. I wanted to raise awareness really of the great things that we do do as cyclists in the community, even though I know we get in your way sometimes when motorists are behind us and people are not too patient. And I have to admit that even cyclists have to learn to be a little bit more tolerant, we're not all perfect. But there is a great community here in town with Team CBC, that's Carolina Brewing Company, there's over 1,300 members. And to date, we've raised over 1.4 million dollars. 162,000 of that has actually gone towards Bike MS and over 10,000 to diabetes. So we really are here for good things too, not just to get in the way of motorists. And we'd like to promote and use the town's local businesses as well when we're riding at rallies. But there have come to light, you know, several changes in the bills. Recently, House Bill 232 has made a change in legislature that motorists are allowed now to overtake cyclists when we are in a lane. And, you know, but we're asking people to also take light of the four-foot clearance, overtaking clearance when they do pass us because in legislature in North Carolina, a bicycle actually is a vehicle. So as a rider, I am a driver, I am driving or riding a vehicle, and so I have to abide the laws of the road when I'm riding my bike. And there's a disconnect right now between drivers understanding that cyclists actually are riding a vehicle, and so they should treat us like a vehicle and not try and side swipe us and bad things come from that. Also, the NC DOT adopted a policy called the Complete Streets in 2009, which I won't go through all the talking points here because I know I'm running out of time, but apparently in 2018, they are providing workshops to help engage transportation professionals and policymakers to advocate changes to help the streets become more safe for cyclists. And I'm not just talking about adult cyclists too, because I know Holly Springs is a great place to bring up a family. And we have a lot of runners, the HSRC has grown a lot, running community, cycling community, kids ride bikes too. And wouldn't it be fantastic to see kids ride their bikes more to school in safe environments when obviously it's applicable? I wouldn't send them down Amundferry Road right now on the bike, but I take my life in my own hands when I'm doing that. But to finish it out, just some signage that now has been implemented really all the way through Cary since Lori Cove, a great friend of ours, was hit and left for dead, basically like roadkill in the middle of the road. The town of Cary now has put these bicycle arrows in the lane because we are within the right to use the full lane. And then the state law signed for the four-foot minimum to passing is there. So I will be coming back and asking with a more in-depth proposal if the town will consider budgeting to provide a more safe community for us. I really appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you Jackie.
Thank you Jackie. Good presentation, we support that. So does the county commissioners are very big on this, by the way. So, thank you. Kevin Adams.
Good evening, everyone. Kevin Adams, 6228 Oliver Creek Parkway in Holly Springs. Good to see everyone tonight. Back on October 7th, I had the opportunity to help spruce up the DG War on Tara Memorial over at Veterans Park. I know some of you were over there at that time, as long as with several other citizens, working alongside with the Griffith family. The War on Tara Memorial was an Eagle Scout project created by David Griffith. It was built at the time to honor his younger brother Sam, a US Marine Major who never came home, as well as other local military heroes who fought the battle against Tara in 9/11. Now, over the summer, there's been a lot of negative comments regarding the conditions of the memorial over social media. Those who felt concerned about the conditions, why the town's not doing anything, as well as some individuals feeling completely disrespected. The memorial itself has always been maintained physically and financially by the Griffith family, and yes, the town has helped out in ways that it could. They've worked very hard to maintain the memorial as well as raising various donations to keep it in top condition. But back in October, I had a good conversation with Kelly Griffith, and I promised her that I would come in here some night, so here I am. I'm here to, on their behalf, to help with the fundraising efforts for the memorial. Besides monetary donations, which are always nice to have for basic care, they're currently fundraising for two sitting walls that are going to be going alongside the benches over there, correct? And I know that there's been one recent event held over at Freddie's Burgers, and I'm sure there'll be more events coming down the road as they continue with their fundraising. So everyone out there in TV land, get your pen and paper handy. Checks can be written to the DG War on Tara Memorial. They can be sent to the DG War on Tara Memorial at PO Box 1124, Holly Springs, 27540. And for those who wish to purchase a brick, and I saw many names, recognizable names on the bricks when I was over there that Saturday morning, but there's still plenty of bricks that can be purchased. So if you wish to purchase a brick, you can go out to that'smybrick.com/eaglescoutdg. And for those of you who love sitting behind a computer on Facebook all day, you can go out to DG War on Tara Memorial and you can stay caught up to date on all the efforts and see some videos posted by the family itself. So if those who can go out there and support any way they can, I'm sure the family would greatly appreciate it. Also wanted to give a quick shout out to one of the abutting neighbors who saw all the hard workers and all the sweat, and came out with a basket of fresh baked warm pumpkin spice muffins. Yeah, baby. I'll be there Saturday morning if she will be.
They were good.
And lastly, if I could work with someone in town to get a little blurb posted on the town's website to help out with the efforts, I'm sure they would appreciate it.
Could you send me an email for some of the specifics you just mentioned Kevin?
Sure will.
I'll be happy to be a part of that.
Awesome.
Great program.
Thank you for your time.
Any questions, Kevin? I think we're on the same team. Thanks Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks Kevin.
I'm on the way.
Your three minutes don't start until you get to the podium.
Pretty good to see all the people here tonight. I was going to come the 5th, but unfortunately I will be incarcerated in the Red Hospital on the night of the 5th.
Incarcerated.
And unable to be here.
That's a good term.
So I wanted to probably say some things that some of them may not like, but I'm going to say them anyway. I love Holly Springs, I've been here most of my life, and I've seen Holly Springs grow from 600 people to what, 35, 38, 40,000 now? And another 20,000 on the way?
Something like that.
And I'm not sure we'll be ready for that. Transportation is one big issue, and somebody needs to get hold of some federal money because we send more money to Washington DC now, and to the state government, and to the county government than we've ever spent coming back to us. So we need to attack our congressmen and our house members in our legislature, and anybody we can to get money. Because I hate paying the bond issue for transportation when 75% of the cars come from somewhere else. So that's the issue that you're going to have to face. The second issue, I fully believe that you should get a permit to extract water from the Cape Fear River. Now, put it in your pocket and hold on to it. Also get a sewer permit to dump more sewer as close to Sharon Harris Lake as you can get it. Because you're going to be pumping sewer for five and six and 10 miles as this town grows to the west. I mean to the, which way that is down that way? But anyway, please do that because that's planning for the future. If you don't plan five, 10 years out, you're going to wind up in a bad situation. I know that because I've been there and done that. I've seen it happen in this county. Growth goes up and down. So always be prepared to be there when the up comes and not be so much in debt when the down comes. Because be careful, because that's a trap. I've seen that in Cary. Those of you, probably not many of you ran in the 1990s, early 90s, when a gentleman named Glenn Lane became Mayor Cary, they stopped doing anything. It almost went down the tube. I don't want to see that happen here, I love this place. And too many people work too hard to get it where it is to see that kind of thing happen. So be extremely careful. As I say, transportation, water, sewer, it is three things that must be addressed for five and 10 years. I don't look at the end of your nose, look far out. And please plan far out. And that really concerns me because I've seen, I've been here long, and I like to think, to tell you the truth. But I'm 81 years old and I've been here for a long, long time, and I've seen too many things go up and down. So that's what I was going to say on the 5th, that you people elected, be careful. Because this business can be dangerous if you're not watching it very, very closely. Because things will move away as quick as they come. We had an all-time high probably building now, but it's going to go down one of these days. So be careful. Thank you for serving this town, look after this town. We all worked too hard years ago to get it where it is, started where it is today, and I want to see it continue to grow. 45, 50,000 people in the next 10, 15 years. Thank you and have a nice night.
Thank you Gerald.
Thanks Gerald. Yeah, good luck. And last but certainly not least, Deborah Carlton.
My name is Deb Carlton, I live at 228 Hickory Glen Lane, Holly Springs. I'm here to speak regarding item 6A on tonight's agenda. I am not a lawyer, I am speaking my personal opinion only. After viewing the recording of the October 17th council meeting several times, I felt compelled to share my concerns on the record. I believe that Ms. Kelly's statements influenced the outcome of the 2017 Town Council election. The timing of the accusations is suspicious to me. She made her statements at the last Town Council meeting before the election, there was no time for an investigation or rebuttal by other candidates. If the investigation shows that Ms. Kelly misrepresented any facts or misstated any truths, I would respectfully request that she step down and that the state and county boards of elections determine the next steps. If she refuses, I request that her actions be evaluated by the county and state boards of elections to determine whether or not she has violated election campaign ethics. I would also request that her actions be investigated by the police and/or sheriff to determine whether criminal charges can be pursued. There is a right and a wrong way to become elected. In my opinion, Ms. Kelly did not do things the right way. She engaged in questionable behaviors by causing speculation about ethics of sitting council members, the mayor, and the town attorney. This is not how I want my town run, nor is it how I want my tax dollars spent. Additionally, according to state law, city and county employees cannot in their official capacity engage in campaign activities while on the job. Ms. Kelly signed the ethics agreement prior to running for office, but as a candidate, this is exactly what she did. They cannot be fired or otherwise treated negatively because of their off-duty political actions or preferences, and they cannot use public resources for political purpose. Yet again, that is exactly what Ms. Kelly did, in my opinion. She used the town resources of the council meeting for her own gain. Employees are free to exercise their First Amendment rights to engage in campaign activities as long as they don't do it at work and as long as no public resources are involved. Her use of the council meeting involved the use of public resources, buildings, staff, and recordings that are publicly funded, and for that reason campaigning at the meeting should have been prohibited. I feel her behavior was intended to make her appear victimized when in fact, I don't believe she was. And while elected officials have First Amendment free speech rights, a board meeting is a limited public forum, even for board members. A member does not have a free speech right to speak on matters that do not relate to the business of the body. Our elected officials were not able to defend themselves and because they were in fact following ethical guidelines they had already signed themselves, while Ms. Kelly used the meeting as a campaign tool. I have known the individuals involved in the ethics complaints for more than 20 years. During that period of time, none of them have behaved inappropriately. Our children have played together on teams and we have worked together to grow our community into the beautiful home it has become. I believe that her statements were intended to make Ms. Kelly look better as a candidate and to disqualify incumbent council members. This is not acceptable for candidates, nor is it acceptable for elected officials. And I have the actual laws if you need me to give them to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deborah. At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing and go to Agenda Item 6A, Request and Communications. This is results of the ethics violation investigation, and I think our town manager has a few comments before we go start.
Yes, sir. But before Ms. Hartzog presents her findings, I would like to provide a brief background of events that have brought us to this juncture. It was on October the 17th that an ethics complaint was filed by Mrs. Christine Kelly as part of her sworn testimony against four sitting Town Council members and the town attorney. In total, it is alleged that there have been 53 violations of the town's code of ethics and conduct for town officials, policy effective October 7th, 2015. Mayor Dick Sears allegedly committed 16 ethics violations. Mayor Protem Jimmy Cobb allegedly committed one ethics violation. Town Council Member Hank Dixon allegedly committed 18 ethics violations. Town Councilwoman Sherry Lee allegedly committed four ethics violations. And finally, Town Attorney John Chifano is alleged to have committed 14 ethics violations in Mrs. Kelly's complaint. Upon receiving the complaint and considering various policy options, the decision was made to employ outside legal counsel to investigate the matter, since a majority of Town Council members and the town attorney would be the central focus of the investigation. On October the 19th, that was two days after the complaint was filed, the town made contact with Kim Hibbard, who is General Counsel of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and requested her recommendation for a neutral law firm to investigate the ethical complaint. The league responded, they provided two potential law firms, one of which was in Raleigh, and that was the one that we selected, and that is Cranfield, Sumner, and Hartzog. The other firm was located in Wilmington. So on October the 25th, Daniel Weeks, who's the Assistant Town Manager, for those that may not know, and myself, first met with Attorney Katie Hartzog and provided her with the ethical violations complaint, including all of the information that was provided by Ms. Kelly on the evening of October the 17th. We also shared with Mrs. Hartzog the video footage of the October 17th Town Council meeting where the ethics violations were alleged. And after determining that there were no internal conflicts with anyone that was being investigated, Mrs. Hartzog agreed to have her firm to conduct the investigation. So it's my understanding now that Mrs. Hartzog has now completed her review and is here tonight to submit her findings.
And welcome. Just for the record, we have not seen this nor heard, so we're anxious to hear from you, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Thank you. I'm Katie Hartzog, and I've been retained as outside counsel to perform an investigation into Christine Kelly's ethics violation against Mayor Dick Sears and Town Council Members Hank Dixon, James Cobb, Sherry Lee, and Town Attorney John Chifano. Mr. Simmons has provided a good summary of how the investigation started, and I will first start with what I did in my investigation. After I met with Mr. Simmons, I decided that in a lot of the allegations in this matter, that it would be best to interview Ms. Kelly with a court reporter present so that everything that was said in the room was taken down and could be provided in a written transcript for anyone who wants to review it. So that is what I did. And I attached to that transcript the information that was provided by Mr. Simmons that came from Ms. Kelly. Ms. Kelly also brought additional documents for me to review to the hearing, which I did. I attached 182 pages of documents that were provided by Ms. Kelly to the transcript, which will be released tomorrow. I reviewed all of those documents. After I interviewed Ms. Kelly, that interview lasted five hours, Ms. Kelly provided me with all of the information related to her ethics complaint. She provided me a significant history about how her complaint arose, and she provided me all of the evidence and facts that she has to support her claim of an ethics violation. After interviewing her, I followed up with Mr. Chifano and Joni Powell and obtained additional documentation from the town that I felt was necessary to complete my review of the documentary evidence. After that, I reviewed all of the relevant Town Council videos. I reviewed the meeting minutes from those meetings. I reviewed the town policies, and I followed up with questions for Ms. Lee. And then I obtained additional documentation from Ms. Kelly. All of the documentation that has been provided will be attached to my report, which will be released tomorrow. All of the documentation has been labeled with Bates stamps, and I have attempted to make citations in my report to the relevant documentation that's been provided that supports my findings. I've also attempted to make notations in the record as far as citations to the transcript where Ms. Kelly answered the questions that I had and provided me with verbal information. So that will be released tomorrow. It's a 14-page document, and it will go through everything that has been alleged in this matter. And tonight, I will provide you a summary of my findings. Please feel free to interrupt me if you have questions. So Ms. Kelly started the interview by providing me a significant factual background about her allegations. She told me that in 2011, the town put a sidewalk in that required it to take some property right in front of her house, a little section of her property. She told me that she hired an attorney at that time, and that the attorney told her that she did not have any right to contest the taking of the property for public use. Ms. Kelly told me that based on that experience, that she was concerned about the town's potential taking of property with regard to the partial closure of Raleigh Street, and that she was also concerned with the town's plans regarding, the detailed master plan regarding Town Hall Commons that was passed on September 5th. And that was Plan 17SEU04, 17MAS05, and 17WAV19. Ms. Kelly became aware in August of 2017 that the town was considering closing a portion of Raleigh Street. She was contacted by the town at that time because the town wanted to conduct a survey of a corner of her property related to the potential closure of Raleigh Street. At that point, she was concerned about the town's plans and how it would impact her. So at that point, she started a dialogue with the town, seeking information about the plans. the plans. On September 5th, she attended the Town Council Meeting and spoke during the public comments period regarding the detailed master plan regarding Town Hall Commons. She expressed her concerns about traffic congestion related to the partial closure of Raleigh Street. At that same meeting, the Town Council heard from members of the town staff regarding the detailed master plan, heard comments from the public, and based on the evidence presented, made findings of fact. Based on everything that the Town Council heard, the Town Council unanimously approved the detailed master plan regarding Town Hall Commons. At that meeting, Mr. Chifano explained that closing Raleigh Street, or closing a portion of Raleigh Street, would require separate notice and a separate public hearing, and that that would not be happening at the September 5th meeting. The following day, September 6th, Ms. Kelly made a public records request. She followed up and obtained this information from Mr. Chifano. That same time, she also met with Mr. Chifano and talked to him about some of her questions. She also met with Joni Powell and told me that she was given access to everything on Ms. Powell's computer related to the town's plans. Ms. Kelly came back in front of Town Council on September 19th and spoke during the public comment period about her interactions with the town. Mr. Kelly -- or, excuse me, Ms. Kelly's husband made comments as well. On September 20th, Ms. Kelly made a second public records request. The second request was so broad that Mr. Chifano was concerned about the large number of results that the search would produce. Ms. Kelly had not focused her search to request emails only from staff members who would have knowledge about this particular project or may -- or who may have emailed about it. She asked for all information from any email box within the town. That means that she requested information from police officers, from HR. Responding to a public records request of this nature would require Mr. Chifano to sift through all of the data and personally review all of these emails to make sure that no documents were produced that were not a matter of public record. Mr. Chifano emailed with Ms. Kelly and asked her to consider the scope of the request and only ask for emails that would be relevant to what she was looking for. Mr. Chifano did not hear back from Ms. Kelly, and so he ran the search on every email box in the town. This produced 140 gigabytes of results. This is a huge amount of information. We're not talking about a needle in a haystack. We're talking about a needle in 140 haystacks. Mr. Chifano continued working on processing the information, but even after working with the data, it still produced over 90 gigabytes of data that he would have to personally sort through and make sure that no public, non-public records were produced, because that would be a violation of the law. Mr. Chifano again corresponded with Ms. Kelly and told her that he could not comply with this request. At that point, Ms. Kelly told me that she started looking at town policies to find out what her rights were. She told me that her goal in filing the ethics complaint was to slow down the process regarding the road closure. So on October 19th, Ms. Kelly made her allegations against Mr. Chifano, Mayor Sears, Mr. Dixon, Mr. Cobb, and Ms. Lee. So Mr. Simmons stated there was a huge number of complaints made by Ms. Kelly. And so what I did in my investigation was categorize the information based on the facts that she presented to me. And so at this point, I will just go over the main factual allegations that she has made and present my findings based on those factual allegations. So the first allegation that she made is that she claims that certain members, Mr. Cobb and Mr. Dixon, acted with bias and did not consider her comments at the public hearing on September 5th. So I've gone over already some of what happened at that September 5th meeting, and I reviewed the videotape from that meeting, and that videotape shows that Ms. Kelly did indeed speak on two different occasions. There was no indication to me in watching the video that anyone failed to listen to her or failed to consider her comments. In addition to her comments, the council also heard information from Kendra Parish about traffic counts that were done in January 2015, January 2016, and the spring of 2017. And I'll just preface that with, part of Ms. Kelly's complaint is that she felt like the town needed to update information about the volume of traffic that would be put on Main Street as a result of the partial closure of Raleigh Street. And so she was concerned about the traffic count and expressed that concern in the September 5th meeting, and Ms. Parish was able to talk about the traffic counts that had been done, and she explained that the town needed to conduct another count since the completion of the Main Street Extension Project, but in Ms. Parish's opinion, she did not expect the count to change significantly enough to alter the draft transportation plan, meaning that the count would not be so significant that there would be a need to change the plan with regard to the downtown development. The Town Council also heard from Sean Ryan, the Town Planner, Elizabeth Goodson, the Development Review Engineer, and the Town Council also heard that the Board of Adjustment had reviewed the plan and was in favor of it. The town also heard public comments regarding the plan. Based on everything that the Town Council heard, they made findings of fact that the proposed use of the plan will not be injurious to the public health, safety, comfort, community moral standards, convenience, or general welfare, and would not adversely affect the adjacent area. The Town Council voted unanimously in favor of the plan. Notably, Ms. Kelly has not brought ethical violations against all council members who voted in favor of the plan. Accordingly, I found that her allegation was not substantiated. Next, Ms. Kelly claimed that Mayor Sears, Mr. Cobb, and Mr. Dixon made inappropriate posts on websites and Facebook regarding the candidacy for Town Council. She claimed that this violated Article 5, Section 11 of the Personnel Policy. That policy states, "Employees shall not make any intentional use of the Internet, email, or other electronic communications devices or sources that is illegal, malicious, inappropriate, or obscene." I reviewed all of the information provided to me by Ms. Kelly. I did not find any evidence of illegal, malicious, inappropriate, or obscene conduct on any of the information provided, including anything that was posted on the Internet, anything that was in an email, or anything that was on Facebook. She also claimed that there were inappropriate comments on Facebook and websites during the campaign that were specifically about her. I reviewed the evidence provided, and I did not see any comments made by any of the accused parties that specifically referenced Ms. Kelly. From what I reviewed, the websites and Facebook pages referenced were developed by candidates in the course of the recent campaign. They contained information about their political stances and provided information for voters in selecting candidates. I also reviewed information provided by Ms. Kelly regarding her own website and her own Facebook page, and she provided similar information to voters during the campaign. Accordingly, I did not substantiate any claim that Mayor Sears, Mr. Cobb, or Mr. Dixon made inappropriate posts on the website, on websites or Facebook. Next, Ms. Kelly claims that the town improperly tried to fast-track the partial closure of Raleigh Street. North Carolina General Statute 160A-299 describes a procedure that a municipality must follow for permanently closing streets and alleys. The town has not yet acted to close Raleigh Street. Accordingly, there is no violation of 160A-299, and I've seen no unethical conduct in reference to this allegation. So that is not substantiated. Next, Ms. Kelly claimed that Mayor Sears, Mr. Dixon, and Mr. Chifano violated the town's personnel policy prohibiting violence, aggressive, threatening, intimidating, bullying, or disruptive behaviors. She contends that Mayor Sears, Mr. Dixon, and Mr. Chifano violated the town's personnel policy, Article 9, Section 5B11. I asked Ms. Kelly to provide me the evidence that she has to substantiate this allegation. As to Mayor Sears and Mr. Dixon, Ms. Kelly stated that they violated the town's policy based on comments they made on websites. Again, I found no evidence of anything posted on any website that even mentioned Ms. Kelly. I found no evidence of any sort of violent, aggressive, threatening, intimidating, bullying, or disruptive behavior by either Mayor Sears or Mr. Dixon. Ms. Kelly also claimed that she was bullied because she was told at the public hearing on October 17, in which she made her allegations of ethical violations, that, and this is her quote, "They were going to call the FBI on her." I reviewed the October 17, 2017, hearing tape, and in that hearing, Mr. Chifano stated that the FBI may be called to investigate Ms. Kelly's ethics complaint. Not that the FBI would be called to investigate Ms. Kelly. This allegation is without merit. Ms. Kelly claims, as to Mr. Chifano and her allegation, that he engaged in violent, aggressive, threatening, intimidating, bullying, or disruptive behavior, that her evidence of this was that when she met with him, she felt that he intimidated her by making her feel as though she could not share her opinions as a resident and telling her that she was a troublemaker. In speaking with Ms. Kelly, she admitted that this behavior was not so much intimidating as not being open-minded on the part of Mr. Chifano. She told me that she felt more intimidated at the Town Council Meeting where she made her ethics complaint. She told me that Mr. Chifano -- well, I reviewed the ethics. I reviewed the tape on this, and on the tape, Mr. Chifano repeatedly asked Ms. Kelly to state the factual support for her claim of an ethics violation. I did not find this to be intimidating behavior by Mr. Chifano. Ms. Kelly also claimed that the tone of Mr. Chifano's emails with her was hostile because he stated that the town may implement charges related to her public records request. However, North Carolina General Statute 132-6.2B provides that a municipality may charge a fee where a public records request is such as to require extensive use of information technology resources or extensive clerical or supervisory assistance by personnel of the agency involved. Given that Mrs. Kelly's public records request produced 90 gigabytes of information, I don't think that his statement that the town may charge for his services violated the statutory language in 132-6.2B, and I don't find that this was an unethical statement for him Next, Ms. Kelly claims that the council members violated North Carolina General Statute, Section 160A-75. This statute provides in part that no member shall be excused from voting except upon matters involving the consideration of the member's own financial interest or official conduct or on matters on which the member is prohibited from voting. I reviewed all of the information and all of the allegations made by Ms. Kelly, and I did not find that any member voted where they had a financial interest in the vote. To support this allegation, Ms. Kelly offered information that Mr. Cobb, Mr. Sears, and Mr. Dixon violated the Ethics Policy Section on Trust, Section D, due to their acceptance of certain campaign contributions. Ms. Kelly provided documentation supporting her claim, and these documentation will be included in my report as Exhibit 9. I reviewed all of that documentation, and I found no evidence of a violation of this section. The documents produced by Ms. Kelly show that the candidates made required disclosures pursuant to Article 22A of Chapter 163 of the North Carolina General Statutes. Ms. Kelly concedes that there is nothing illegal about the contributions. Further, she was not able to provide any specific factual allegations regarding her contention that any member violated the ethics policy related to the referenced campaign contributions. Ms. Kelly told me that she had a hunch about potential violations, but no specific facts. Review of the contribution reports do not support any allegations of an ethics or other I'm going to conclude here. In summary, I found no credible evidence of an ethics violation in this matter. Ms. Kelly admitted to me that she had been frustrated with the development process and brought this complaint to delay the vote regarding the downtown project until there was further discussion about real traffic numbers and a modified B-DAP plan. Ms. Kelly told me that she could have rethought some of her allegations. Does anyone have any questions?
Open to questions the board? Or comments? Questions or comments?
Thank you. Thank you. Just a second. So basically, of all the charges, there's no evidence that we violated any public trust in any shape, form, or fashion, including Councilman Chifano?
Yes, sir. I did not find any evidence whatsoever of any ethical violation.
A side question to that would be, the town's incurred a great deal of expenditure of resources in terms of cost to secure your services as it relates to your review of the complaint and to interview Ms. Kelly. Do we have recourse to go back and seek reimbursement as a town for those expenses?
I was not asked to review that. I was just asked to investigate the violations. Sure, Mr. Chifano could help you with that.
Actually, on that point, would it be inappropriate to ask you what your cost would be to the town?
I think it's going to be a matter of public record. I looked at it before I came here tonight, and I don't have an official number, but I would estimate it somewhere in the ballpark of $8,500 to $9,000.
Anything else? Sherry, you got any comments?
I -- it's just, it was very disheartening to have these, you know, allegations brought against all of us. I especially, after reading through and seeing the allegations against myself, I just really, really did not understand it. I did not understand my post of "Why I Love Holly Springs" or whatever, how that's a violation. I just, I will, I, myself and Councilman Villicen and the mayor have to, you know, work with Ms. Kelly in the next few years, and I just hope that we can find a better way to disagree, more strength to be able to talk to each other with respect, with what's best for Holly Springs, all of Holly Springs, going forward. That's it.
Well, I would just add quickly that I found this whole situation absolutely incredible. I've never seen anything like it in 16 years. I hope I never see anything like it again in the next four years. And I just hope we can come together as a town and work together as a town and not have this kind of an interruption, in my opinion. And I thank you for your diligence and your hard work. I think you did a good job. I happen to agree with what you did, of course, but again, I thank you for your due diligence. Anything else?
Yeah, I probably should say that I'm relieved, but I'm not, because I had no doubt that it was all these -- the complaint itself was ridiculous. And thank you for all of your work on this, obviously. And, you know, it is a significant expense that the town is going to have to incur. And it is a significant expense that the town is going to have to incur. And I really don't feel that, really, the taxpayers should bear this cost. So I'd like to make a motion that this town council requests that Ms. Kelly make a voluntary payment of this legal expense so that the taxpayers don't have to. That's my motion.
Discussion? Discussion? Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three ayes, one nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
And again, it's non-binding. It's a...
Voluntary.
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 Anything else?
Thank you for your efforts.
Seeing none, thank you, and there is obviously no other motions to this point, but again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Will we get copies of the findings? Will we get copies?
Yes. Okay, moving right along. Agenda item 7A, Public Hearing, Annexation A17.03, Honeycut Road Property, Gina Clapp.
Our first item this evening is for an annexation, whoops, my map looks like it changed slightly, but that's all right, for 235 and a half acres along Honeycut Road, is on both the north and the south sides. It also includes this parcel right through here. This voluntary annexation petition is in conjunction with the Honeycut Farms Project later on the agenda this evening, and we do require a voluntary annexation when a development is proposing connection to the town water and source system. And of course, with their development plan, that they would be doing that. It is adjacent to our contiguous town limits right through here. This is the high school, this Garrison subdivision, and then it also eliminates the elementary school from being a satellite annexation if this was approved for annexation. The petition meets all statutory requirements, and that is all I've got.
Questions?
None.
At this point in time of open and closed public hearing, no one's signed up. Is there further discussion? Seeing none?
I'll make the motion to adopt Annexation Ordinance A17-03.
Second. Motion's been made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing nationally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janine, 7B, Public Hearing, Honeycut Farms Subdivision, Sean Ryan, and maybe Elizabeth Goodson. Had to do that. Go, Sean.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a request for a development option subdivision, same property that Gina had just described in the previous agenda item. 235 acres located on the north and south side of Honeycut Road. Just to orient those in the audience, Piney Grove Wilbon is along the right-hand side of the map here, Cassholt along the left-hand side of the map, and then this property is about halfway down Honeycut in between Cassholt and Piney Grove Wilbon Road. This is where the property is located in relation to the town's future land use plan. The project area is highlighted in red on the screen here. The property is designated on our future land use plan as residential, and residential is indicated as appropriate for all sorts of residential land uses such as single-family and townhomes with a density between two units and eight units per acre. The eight units per acre would be located in the core area of our community growth areas, which are the lighter green circles in the middle here, and decreasing down to two units per acre as you move out and away from those central core areas. So this particular project area has two community growth areas. The first one is the Piney Grove Wilbon Wade Nash Community Growth Area centered here at the intersection. The portion of the outer part of that community growth area is within the project area. The Avant Ferry Road and Cassholt Road Community Growth Area, a very small portion of this project area is within the outer portion of that growth area. And it is not within the Rouse Road-Cassholt Road growth area, but it is right along the edge of the outer ring of that community growth area. Just to give you a little bit of background on the rezoning of this property, it was rezoned by the town council back in 2016. The original zoning was R-30. It is in RET, or it was in RETJ prior to the annexation, and all properties are designated that R-30 when RETJ. Town council did rezone that property to R-10 with a series of conditions, and those conditions relate to how the property would develop and the location of land uses within any potential development. So the staff report for the town council goes through all 14 rezoning conditions that were offered, and I'm not going to go through each and every one of those, but I will hit the highlights. This page was Sheet 2 in the plan set. It goes through each one of the 14 conditions and then indicates how the plan is meeting each of those specific zoning conditions. So in terms of density, the project was limited to 2.64 units per acre of gross density. The proposed subdivision comes in at just about 2.61, so slightly less than the maximum density allowed by zoning. The zoning petition limited the maximum number of homes to 610 total, and no more than 213 of those could be multifamily or two-family. And the proposed project is for 603 total homes, 211 of those being multifamily or two-family. So again, they are meeting that requirement. The development options waivers that are being requested are for the minimum lot size and setback provisions as allowed in the development option ordinance. The single-family lot waivers, so whereas an R-10 development would traditionally have a 10,000-square-foot lot, we do allow with a waiver to go down to 7,500 square feet, and the applicant is requesting that waiver for the single-family lots. The average lot area is just about 8,500 square feet. One two-family unit is being proposed. It meets our 15,000-square-foot minimum lot size that's allowed by waiver. And as far as the multifamily, the multifamily is a waiver to allow multifamily townhomes in a single-family district, and as I said previously, 211, excuse me, 209 of those units are multifamily townhome units. Our development option ordinance requires that the applicant provide a certain number of open space. In a traditional subdivision, we don't require any open space to be provided, so in order to get those reductions in lot sizes, we require a minimum of 10% of the project area be dedicated in permanent open space. As part of the rezoning, the applicant committed to having 35% of their project area be dedicated to open space, and they have proposed 93.48 acres of total open space, which is 39.7% of the project area in open space. Development options requires that 50% of the developed, or of the open space be developed open space, in this case, 11.78 acres. Developed open space means some sort of facility like a park, swimming pool, park area. 14.13 acres have been provided as developed open space, and that's 60% of their minimum requirement. So they are providing more than our minimum requirement in developed open space. The remaining open space can be passive. 11.77 acres is required, and they've provided 32.04 acres of passive open space. This is the proposed subdivision and how the open space relates to the lot layout. North is actually facing the left-hand side of the screen, so Honeycut is running up and down the middle of the screen here. You can see the pink areas are the developed open spaces, so the parks and recreation areas. The darker green area is the passive open space, and the lighter green area is all of the open space that is remaining, which is the wetland streams or otherwise protected environmental areas that don't count towards that minimum 10% open space area. So in regards to the developed open space, the applicant has requested three different waivers, particularly about the parking in those open space areas. The main amenity center features a pool and a park area as well as the mail kiosk. Per our parking requirements, we would require 49 parking spaces. The proposal is showing 38 parking spaces, and so the waiver is a request to reduce the number of parking spaces by 11 spaces or 22.5%. The ordinance allows for a maximum reduction of 25%, and we do require an area set aside that the number of spaces that are reduced could be built in the future if deemed necessary, and that has been shown on the plans just to the north of the amenity center. Two additional waivers have been requested. Our ordinance requires that no more than 75% of parking spaces be located between a building and a street frontage. That is primarily for commercial buildings to reduce the number of parking spaces along thoroughfares, and this property does not border a thoroughfare, and there would actually be a large berm here, so the parking would be visible to the residents entering and exiting the facility. So that waiver is requested for the amenity center. That exact same waiver has been requested for the second primary recreation area, which is the Sales and Community Center. The existing house that is on the property is proposed to remain and turned into a sales building and then ultimately a community center. And again, that waiver to allow more than 75% of the parking spaces in front of the building has been requested for this lot as well. This is the proposed landscaping plan. This is only the northern half of the project, but the southern half also follows all of the town's requirements. They have provided a 20-foot preservation greenbelt along the perimeter of the property, which would be supplemented to our minimum standard of a Type A 20 buffer where existing vegetation does not meet that requirement. They are providing a 50-foot Type C 225 thoroughfare buffer that is an opaque evergreen buffer along the thoroughfare, and street trees are placed throughout the subdivision, which includes the town's root guard to protect the sidewalk and curb. These are the proposed elevations for the carriage-style townhomes. You can see that the homes look like traditional single-family, however, they're connected only by a storage shed in the back. The townhomes for the northern part of the project are shown on the bottom of the screen, look very similar in architectural style to the carriage units. With that, I will invite Elizabeth up to talk about some of the engineering requirements for this project.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Elizabeth.
This is quite a large project, but we'll walk through the various utility and transportation requirements associated with that. I did turn the plan sheet on its side so that north is facing to the top of the sheet, so that is why this is turned in this angle. Water for this project will be provided through continuing an extension that's been done with the Honey, Buckhorn Creek School, it now has a name. So continuing that along Honeycut Road to serve the site, there also will be interconnection to Garrison through the street that is stubbed there. The sewer service for this site will be done through a new pump station and associated force main back to the town's treatment plant. This pump station site plan will come back before you on the consent agenda at your next meeting. It does meet all of our town standards and is buffered accordingly, but the location of it is down here in the lower corner of the site. It is tucked in with stream buffers and down near this pond. The pump station is going to be sized to handle not only this project, but also sized to handle the upstream properties as well. As you are aware, the traffic study for this project was done as a part of the rezoning. It was one of the first ones that we adjusted that process and started doing it with the rezoning. So all of the findings of the traffic study have been incorporated into this plan, including some off-site improvements at Honeycut and Piney Grove, Honeycut and Cassholt of proportionate fee towards the turn lane at Cassholt and Avant Ferry, a signal when warranted at Honeycut and Piney Grove. Those we've gone over multiple times, but I believe that the applicant may have some additional detail, or if you've got further questions, we are happy to answer those. The additional improvements that you will find with this is road widening along the frontage of the property. As we've talked before, our UDO requires center line to the project side, half of the cross-section on the comprehensive transportation plan. So in this case, we have a portion on the north side of the road, so the frontage would be from this point to this point. On the south side of the road, from this point to this point, right about where the creek starts. That does allow for a large area that will be widened to the ultimate cross-section through the middle, so you will begin seeing the full median, the full four-lane median divided cross-section through there. There is sidewalk on both sides of the road as a part of that cross-section. This is in our Cape Fear River Basin and is subject to the town's Phase 2 post-construction stormwater ordinance, and there are stormwater control measures throughout the site. I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Questions of Elizabeth? Think we're good? Thank you. She got off easy. Yes. She's very authoritarian. I mean, honestly.
All right. Planning Board discussion. Our planning board rep this evening is Ms. Ryback. If you'd like for her to come up and go through this, I'd be happy to invite her up, or if you'd just like me to go through it, whichever you prefer.
You think? Doesn't matter. Whoever wants to.
She's here, she's here, so let's get her up here.
I knew you wanted to do this. Name and address, please.
Dana Ryback, 424 Marsh Landing Drive, Holly Springs. We did discuss this. The transportation impacts of the project are one of the big items that came up. If there need to be any speed control measures to slow down traffic on Honeycut, it was a big agenda item that we talked about. Impacts to the neighboring community of Garrison, there were quite a few people who came in, spoke in the public comment period about their impacts to their community and how the project relates to the proposed road improvements being completed by the school. Open space, we talked about a little bit, specifically the trailways and the process development, how it would connect to the community growth. And town greenway system, we as a planning board have been watching that closely with everything that's come before us. Proper transition in residential lot sizes, again, was something that came up by Garrison, specifically when proposed project is next to an existing neighborhood. Again, a lot of those people came and spoke during the public comment period and were very concerned about the transition between the two neighborhoods. The timeline for development, when they would get their first residence approved to be expected to move in, and the waivers requested for the recreational parking area, and how they would deem necessary if the additional parking waiver were to be approved. We as the planning board did make a recommendation that the parking reduction waiver be denied. We just felt that there was no reason for it to come up later. If we were going to put it in, why not just put it all in at once? I think that's it. Any questions?
Were championship, or champion trees ever discussed with the planning board?
Legacy trees?
The legacy trees. I call them champions, whatever.
So the planning board did not bring up the champion trees specifically. However, as part of the zoning conditions, I believe it was six specific trees were identified as champion trees on the property that would be saved. There's, let me go back to a different map here. So this is the sheet that has the zoning conditions, and you can see these circles here in the open space. Those are the champion trees that were identified with the zoning conditions, and those are all being saved as shown. Outside of those six trees, no other champion trees were identified by the applicant, but they were not required to do so either.
Thank you. Anything else?
The discussion for the transition between this subdivision and Garrison and the setbacks that are in there, how did that ebb and flow in terms of the discussions? Were there some, you know, looking at greater setbacks as it relates to, you know, keep the two subdivisions transition R-10 to R-10, or 10,000-square-foot lots to 10,000-square-foot lots, or was the buffering...
The buffering, it was eight to one was our vote, or, excuse me, I think it was...
Was it eight to one, seven to one?
Seven to one.
Seven to one, and the one, I have to kind of say the one person who disagreed happens to live in the community that's behind that. So we all pretty much felt that it wasn't as big of an issue, but again, a lot of the Garrison community members did feel that there wasn't enough of a transition for the lot sizes.
So they would like a little bit bigger lots closer up, so it would ease the transition from one to the other?
They did, yes. And I believe the developer actually did move some of the townhomes that were supposed to originally have been there to a different location. to originally have been there to a different location to kind of ease into that burden. Anything further?
That was all I had.
I guess, well, I think it may have to do with you or not. The denial of the parking reduction waiver, was there any discussion from the developer that if that is the way it is, that he could, or she could, or they could add the, I think it was eleven spaces?
I believe, yeah, I believe they said they could do it now, or they could withhold it, and if necessary, they could put it in. From the planning board perspective, we felt there was really no reason to withhold it and to do it later. If you're going to do it, you might as well put it all in now. It was eleven spaces, I believe. So we didn't feel that there was really necessary to withhold them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions of Sean at this point?
Yes. Go ahead. Sean, I guess, on that, the point, parking point?
Yes.
I'd asked by email, but perhaps if you could share right now with us, what, if we were to vote to delay that, those eleven spaces, what would, what needs to be in place, or what would necessitate those eleven spaces to be built later on?
Right. So we would monitor the situation, of course, if we got feedback from the residents in the neighborhood that there became an issue with the parking lot being full all the time and residents not having a place to park, or if a lot of residents started parking on the street because there was simply no room in the parking lot and it was creating traffic issues or issues for emergency access vehicles to reach the property. We would then notify the applicant that they, they need to have those parking spots installed for safety reasons. We would put a timeline in it. It's typically a three-to-six-month timeframe where the applicant would have to have that parking installed within that timeframe. If they do not, they would then fall into a zoning violation and they would be charged a fee as that zoning violation occurred on a daily basis. So we would monitor it and take action once it was determined that there is a parking issue at that property.
And then the parking requirements are based on full and complete utilization of that amenity?
That is correct. So the parking count for that specific amenity site was based on having the mail kiosk there. We require two spaces for that mail kiosk, having a developed park facility on that property, as well as having the clubhouse and pool at the property. So it, there's, our UDO has specific requirements for all of those different uses, and you have to add them up together to get the maximum parking requirement.
So that's the forty-nine spaces?
That's correct, yes.
So how long would we monitor that, until complete build-out, or?
At any time that we would receive a complaint from a resident that there was a situation, we would begin to monitor that and investigate. I'm not sure how long that would take, but if there was a parking problem, it would be, it would be, you know, visible to us.
Well, I mean, it's not going to be a parking problem in, you know, in three years when there's only a certain amount of homes, but in five or six years when all the homes are built out, there could be. So we would still be responsible for it.
Absolutely.
Have we done this in the past? I can't recall. I think we have, but I'm not sure.
Now, the only one that I can remember that we've done for a rec site recently was Lockridge Rec Site, but that one has not been built yet, so.
Other questions, Sean?
Yeah. Trying to phrase it so it's not going to be a really lengthy question or response, but I'm curious on the findings of fact and how the town supports those findings of facts. I've read what the developer has proposed and discussed with the developer and some of those, but, you know, specifically when we get down to enhancing and preserving natural area and reducing the amount of tree clearing and so forth, how do we come to a finding that that is factual?
So the findings of fact are provided by the applicant, and they are here and they can definitely answer that question for you in greater detail. As staff, we review the findings of fact to make sure that they are complete, but we are not recommending to you, you know, approval or concurrence with those findings. Those are completely for the applicant to demonstrate to you that they have met those findings. What we as staff do is we are reviewing the development application, we are reviewing the subdivision plan for conformance with the town's ordinances. We have found that this subdivision request meets all the town's ordinances. So as far as meeting the findings of fact, that would be up for the applicant to convince you that they have done that.
Sounds good.
You ready for the applicant?
Sure.
Again, for the record, name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Bob Zumwalt with McAdams, 2905 Meridian Parkway in Durham. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council for your time tonight. I am director of the Planning and Design Group at McAdams, and I am a registered landscape architect, and I've been practicing for twenty-two years. I personally designed and oversaw the preparation of the plans that are before you tonight. And I'm here with Jeremy Medlin from MI Homes. I'm here with Earl Llewellyn from Kimley Horner Traffic Engineer, and Jeremy Finch, our civil engineer from McAdams. We're pleased to be here tonight to present Honeycutt Farms. It's the final step in creating the quality, walkable, open-space community that we talked about during the zoning process, and we're excited to bring you the plan that lives up to those commitments. You may recall that we received our approval back in March, and it resulted in a comprehensive list of conditions that I will neither go over here too long, but in general, they were regarding density, housing types, open space and trails, preservation of champion trees, architectural controls, and traffic calming. Tonight, we seek approval of the development options, site plan, to implement the commitments that we made as part of those conditions. As, just a quick refresher, I'll just take a couple minutes to outline those commitments that we made and how we're implementing them. As you know, the property is zoned R-ten, as Sean stated, with a maximum density of two-point-six-four units per acre. To effectively transition to the adjoining properties, you'll recall, we concentrated the density within the community growth rings, allowing it to, the density to drop back as it approached the adjoining properties. As a landscape architect, I'm excited to be working on this special site. I'm sure you've driven down Honeycutt Road, you've seen the specimen oak trees, there's some pictures here of the old home site, and the farm pond that it sits on, as well as the barn that sits out there and the old smokehouse. I'm pleased to say we've worked all of these into our design. We're preserving all of them, are going to be repurposing them and incorporating them into our seven-acre recreational amenity complex that you'll see in a couple minutes. Since our zoning back in March, we have spent a lot of time on the site. We've talked to the Honeycutt family to better understand their history of farming on the site, done some photo documenting of the old tobacco barns, and it's been really great to learn all these things and incorporate them into the design of the community. As stated during the zoning, our original vision was to create a community where people came to raise families, a community with significant amount of open space, and a, and a community that allows, allowing for the preservation of special features and specimen trees. We also talked about incorporating trails, parks, ponds, and other amenities such as a clubhouse, trails, boardwalks, and playgrounds. Over the past eight months, we've worked hard to implement this vision and to, that we painted during the zoning process. The plan we have before you tonight remains true to the vision that we presented, and it not only complies with the conditions that we put upon ourselves, but we exceed quite a few of them. Next, I just want to touch briefly on how our plan addresses the current concerns we heard during the zoning process. You'll remember that the, most of the concerns could be grouped into density, the compatibility of townhomes with the adjoining property, construction, and cut-through traffic, and then just traffic in general. To address the concerns, we committed to a significant number of zoning conditions. This table here outlines the commitment we made during the zoning and then how we've complied with it on the table on the right. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I just wanted to draw your attention to the ones that are in yellow. They're really the ones that Sean hit as well, just showing that the, were below the density and the unit count that we had capped ourselves at. And then with significantly more open space than we committed to, we were, we were happy to see that we could preserve almost forty percent of the site in open space. Next, I'd just like to talk briefly about density and open space to help illustrate how our proposal fits in with the surrounding neighborhoods. We showed this plan at the zoning hearing, you probably, you might recognize it. We've updated it now with the actual statistics for the Honeycutt Farm. First, let me just cover density briefly. Notice our proposal at two-point-six-one units per acre, it's much less dense than Autumn Park, which is four and a quarter units per acre, and it's comparable in density to both Braxton Village and Holly Glen, which are at two and a half and two-point-six units per acre, even though both of these neighborhoods are almost completely outside of the community growth areas. To effectively transition to the Garrison neighborhood, which is shown here, we have limited our density to two-point-two-seven units per acre. The Garrison neighborhood is at two-point, oh, excuse me, yeah, the Garrison neighborhood is at two-point-two-seven, and we have limited our density to two-point-two-three. Also, again, there's no townhomes within that cone you see there. Open space, I mentioned our goal was to create a walkable, open-space community, and I think you can see this slide, kind of summarizes how significant that commitment is. Just as an example, if you look at Holly Glen, which is, it's about a hundred acres larger in size, yet we're still offering fifty-eight acres more open space than that community. Braxton Village, also about the same size as our project, it provides twenty-three acres of open space, and we provide ninety-three acres of open space. By providing this much open space, ninety-three acres, the community will be unique in Holly Springs, we think. People will be drawn here to take advantage of the extensive trails, parks, and recreational amenities that we have woven into the community. As designed, the community includes ninety-three-point-four-eight acres of open space, which is made up of developed recreational open space, passive open space, natural open space. And then also, we've got a total of eleven pocket parks in the community. We've got two miles of paved trails that connect all the pocket parks, and the two miles of trails include a half a mile of Town of Holly Springs Greenway that we'll be building. We also have the trail connections to both of the schools. And then we've got the substantial landscape buffering around the perimeter of the property in the form of the twenty-foot greenbelt, as well as the fifty-foot bermed landscape buffers along either side of Honeycutt Road along the frontage. We also will have a seven-acre main recreation amenity, would include a clubhouse, pool, play structure, community building, trails, amphitheater, large pond with a fishing dock, and again, renovating the barn and the smokehouse to integrate those into the amenity. The design of Honeycutt Farm community as proposed tonight not only complies with our zoning conditions, but it's, it far exceeds the amount of committed open space while proposing less density than could be provided under the zoning that we got back in March. In order to be able to create this community with forty percent open space and two miles of trails, it's necessary to cluster development, enhancing and preserving the natural environmental features on the site. In my professional opinion as a landscape architect, I do believe that this plan does a great job of satisfying findings of fact number five by preserving and enhancing the natural environment as follows. We have exceeded the amount of open space that would be required under an R-ten subdivision by almost seventy acres. So under an R-ten subdivision, we required of twenty-three and a half acres of open space. We've provided ninety-three-point-four-eight. We have preserved a total of nine champion trees on site, ranging in size from twenty-seven to fifty-seven inches in diameter. We're preserving and incorporating three existing iconic structures into the design of the amenity complex, the barn, the farmhouse, and the smokehouse. We're preserving two of the large farm ponds on the property and improving the stability of their dam structure so that we can install trails around them and incorporate them into the two-mile walking system. And then finally, we're retaining forty-point-six-seven acres of the existing tree canopy on the property, as opposed to twenty-six-point-one-six acres that would be required if the property were developed as a standard R-ten subdivision. As you know, the development options ordinance allows an applicant to utilize waivers from portions of the base zoning district in order to preserve larger amounts of open space. I think it's important to point out what Sean did, that while we are asking for the waivers, the average lot size is still over eighty-five hundred square feet. For these reasons, we feel Honeycutt Farms' open-space concept satisfies all the findings of fact necessary to take advantage of the development options subdivision waivers. In addition, it offers a unique active lifestyle experience to future residents of Holly Springs. Finally, just like to touch on traffic briefly. We're all familiar with the concerns that this part of the town is facing, and at the time of the zoning, you'll recall, there were a lot of traffic improvements that were either pending or under construction. So given the concerns at that time, we did go ahead and do the traffic study with part of the, as part of the zoning. It was reviewed by DOT and the town, and as Sean mentioned, all those required improvements are in the plans. But one, you'll recall maybe, one of the points of debate at that time was our traffic engineer in our, in the study was, had an assumption of a twenty-seven-point-two percent traffic diversion from Avant Ferry Road due to the Main Street Extension project. Recent traffic counts have been collected now that it's open, and they confirm the actual traffic diversion of twenty-seven-point-seven percent, which is slightly more than they had predicted in the study. So it's our belief that the assumptions in our traffic study will play out equally as accurate for the remaining roadway improvements we'll be constructing. Just some final things before I wrap up. I want to address just a couple items that were raised at the planning commission. One, we talked about the parking reduction quite, we didn't talk about it at all, frankly, at the planning commission. We didn't have any discussion about it. So I wanted to provide a little more information. The reason we didn't feel that the parking stalls were necessary was we viewed this as a recreation complex, the whole thing. Now, there's really no way in the ordinance to look at it that way, there's not a mechanism. So we saw thirty-eight spaces here, we saw opportunities for some on-street parking around the complex, we saw another twenty-five stalls here, and then we combined that with all the walking trails and felt like you could have a total of about seventy stalls in this vicinity. And so we felt like if you had the mechanism to require it, why reduce the amount of landscaping and add impervious if it isn't necessary, which we don't feel it will be? Again, not something that we couldn't put in, we just feel like it won't be needed. So it's not something that we're tremendously concerned about, just think, we asked for it because we felt it was the right thing to do to not add more impervious. One other thing, the lot size transition. Commissioner Berry did mention that he was not supportive because of the lot size transition between us and Garrison. So what we did after we heard that, we went back, looked at the lots adjacent to Garrison, and we reviewed this with Sean and the planning staff. We can increase all those lots to be over ten thousand square feet, some of them twelve, adjacent to Garrison, and then still keep the landscape buffer on the back of the lots, and we are more than happy to offer this change tonight. We'd be happy to do that as part of our, our project. In closing, I'd just like to say how pleased we are to be working on this unique, open-space community. We began work on the detailed design of all the amenities and landscape packages, and I can say without a doubt, all the effort that MI Homes is going to, to make this a special place. I haven't seen it with any other project I've worked on in recent years, and I think it's going to make it not, not only special for Holly Springs, but I think what they're doing to the amenity complex will set it apart in the region. So I want to thank you for your time and really appreciate all your support. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the architect? Seeing that? Thank you, sir. At this point in time, we all, is there any further discussion before we open a public hearing, which we are going to close? Going to open a public hearing and close a public hearing because I wasn't signed up. Further discussion? I had one on, on the, the parking. We have three options, really. One is to deny from the planning board. Two is to wait until such a time, and Sean, you put that out. And number three is to go ahead and do it anyway. I'd like to hear the board's comments on, on that particular issue, because that's the one denial that we've tried.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think I kind of hinted at the fact that I was, that I'm in favor of, you know, not putting in at this point, but allowing it to, later on, if there's, if there's need for it. You know, I, I've asked a number of folks, just specific to their pools at their neighborhoods, and I know that mine in particular, you know, very rarely is there a time when it's completely full, except for maybe like Fourth of July and some, things like that. There are other pools where it overflows regularly, but just because they don't have, you know, they don't have adequate parking and the pool might be sort of in a remote location as well. I would, you know, it doesn't necessarily save the developer money, because if it's needed, it's going to have to be put in later on. And the, the cost of a, an eleven-space parking lot would be a lot more then, than if they were just to extend it now. So I would rather keep it, you know, allow them to delay it and keep, keep that area green, at least in the interim, until... until there's truly a need for it.
Sure. So, that'd be tabling, tabling that particular parking reduction waiver?
Well, actually, actually allowing,
Allowing them.
Allowing them to waiver. But, but as Mr. Ryan had said, there is, there are tools in place that will require them at some point. And it sounds like it's relatively subjective, but, but I feel, you know, I'm confident the planning staff would take the,
It covers it.
Any complaints seriously.
Other comments or questions?
No, I mean, I tend to agree with, with Hank on, on the parking situation. Speaking with our own pool, it does overflow at times. But looking throughout the entire year of, of the facility, it's not, it's not that often that it would do that.
Where you live is probably swim meets.
Yeah, or, you know, just high times during the summer. But yeah, swim meets is, is a whole different ball, ball race. I do have a transportation, transportation question of Kendra or Elizabeth. Cabot Drive, which connects to the northern part of, of Honeycutt. How is that road classified? And has there been any calculations or projections on what additional traffic that might take from Honeycutt?
Make sure I understood your question right. The road that comes out of Garrison, your question was about what the classification was and whether or not that's been looked at with the additional traffic?
Yeah, given the layout of that section of Honeycutt, it seems to kind of want traffic, especially if you're heading to 55 and, and downtown or anywhere else. It might be easier to go through Garrison than to try to make a left turn out on the Honeycutt in the opposite direction.
I know their transportation engineer is here, but I believe that was covered when the traffic study was done originally. And the dispersing of traffic was looked at and how much additional cars were going that way. And it did not warrant any widening or improvements along the path that those cars would travel. The majority of these homes will come out the main entrance most of the time, but there is probably a portion of Garrison that will come this way as well for various reasons, and a portion of Honeycutt that will go that way. So, there, there is some change of traffic patterns that's expected. Was there anything else in y'all's analysis that would speak to that?
Just simply, I would only add that the conditions that, 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 that,
In this location.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's left turns anywhere. So, the left turn out of Honeycutt onto, or, yeah, out of the Honeycutt Farm, onto Honeycutt Road is, is where I see that as a possible deterrent and using Garrison as a alternate route.
I believe the percentage that was used for this was, was looked at pretty highly of what would happen if a large number of people went through there. So, it was a very conservative analysis when we looked at the traffic study back when the rezoning was being looked at from a big perspective on this.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Other questions, Elizabeth?
Oh, oh, come, actually, I mean, I, I know how that, I mean, it's def, you know, right now Garrison is kind of like an island. And, you know, I, I know personally where, you know, where I live, it was the same way. And then Windcrest and Sunset Nor, Sunset Ridge North were developed. And, and then my stub street, which I knew was going to go somewhere, you know, the, the traffic increased there. But, and it's been, you know, for a few years now. However, now with, I want to say Ramcat.
2018 Market.
2018, 2018 Market.
I want to say Ramcat.
You know, with, with the development of that, I think some of the traffic that comes into, you know, where I live will, you know, that'll disperse in that direction. So, I think it's just over time that, yes, there is going to be some, an increase in traffic there, for sure. It's definitely going to happen because when you go from an island to having a bridge connected to your island, it's going to increase. But I think with more development in the area, you know, because obviously Honeycutt has what looks like,
Got other stubs.
Yeah, a couple of different stub streets there that it'll, you know, it'll all dissipate as well, so.
Other questions? Comments? So, as it relates to the parking reduction, I think we all agreed that this would be something to be okay to wait?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we do, you know, monitor it until full, full buildout, when we really can see, you know, what can happen. Living in Holly Glen, we have overflow parking all the time, but we have that, you know, Holly Mont is so wide, that you can park on either side and, you know, trucks could get through easily. You know, I don't know if that'll be the case there. So, I think it's something we are going to have to keep an eye on. I'm always for more open space, you know, unless, you know, building out there. But we're going to have to keep an eye on it.
Okay, we have five suggested motions. And when we get to the one with the parking reduction waiver, we'll verbalize that if we will. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Someone want to start?
I can start. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-50 to make and accept the findings of fact for Development Option Plan Petition Number 17-DO-02 for Honeycutt Farms and for off-street parking waivers 17-WAV-20 and 22.
Second, motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, a motion to grant waiver petition 17-WAV-20 and 22 for Honeycutt Farm subdivision.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number three.
So, this is,
This is the parking reduction. So, the motion on top is if you want to approve the reduction and delay the installation. The motion on the bottom.
The motion on top would be the one to delay.
Correct.
All right, so then I'll make the motion to make and accept the findings of facts to be recorded in the minutes for a waiver of regulations to allow a reduction of 11 parking spaces in association with Development Option Plan Petition 17-DO-02 for Honeycutt Farm.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you. And number four?
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to allow a reduction of 11 parking spaces in association with Development Options Plan Petition Number 17-DO-02 for Honeycutt Farm with conditions listed in Agenda packets.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number five of five.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve Development Option Plan Petition 17-DO-02 for Honeycutt Farm with conditions listed in Agenda packets.
Second. Motion made in second all favor. All right.
I have a question, please.
Sure.
He offered an extra condition that the lots adjacent to Garrison would be 10,000 square feet.
Oh.
Do we want to add that?
Uh, I think so.
Yeah.
We do?
Yes.
Correct, yeah, we do.
We absolutely do.
Can you do that?
Okay, done.
Okay, thank you, Joni. Thanks, good point. All right. That's it? Can we vote?
We can vote. We didn't vote, did we?
Oh, let's start again. You made the motion.
Yes, I made the motion.
Do we have a second? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. It's a good project. Thank you. Looking forward to it. Moving right along. Gen item 7C, Public Hearing 17 UDO-03-OR, Office Research and Development Park District. Sean, you're on. Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
All right, this is a staff-initiated text amendment to UDO Section 3.04. This is the Office Research and Development Park District in the Town of Holly Springs. So, in our ordinance, we have a list of permitted uses in each zoning district and then a list of special exception uses in each zoning district. Special exception uses are uses that we recognize may be beneficial to the Town of Holly Springs when they are appropriately located. And they are uses that may have unique characteristics that may require various waivers or variances from development standards in the ordinance. So, special exception uses allow for the Planning Board and the Town Council to have more input on the design of sites as well as input on the various waivers and variances that may be needed for projects. Staff has been in early conversations with UNC Rex Healthcare on their proposed hospital for Holly Springs. And we have quickly recognized that there are many unique things about a hospital's facility that may need some flexibility or some extra consideration from the Town Council as to where facilities are appropriately or inappropriately located on a piece of property. There's potential impacts to adjacent owners such as light and noise that we need to have a little bit more consideration for. So, currently, a hospital is a permitted use in that zoning district, which means that if it were to come before the council, as long as it met all the standards, it would be required to be approved. Whereas a special exception use would give the council a little bit more flexibility in determining the layout of that site as well as any variances or waivers. So, staff is recommending that we change that from a permitted use to a special exception use. It also triggers what would be a public hearing. So, adjacent property owners would be notified of the pending development under a special exception use where they would not be if it was a permitted use. And we feel that a hospital is one of those uses where adjacent property owners should definitely be involved in, in that discussion. So, Planning Board did review this request. They didn't have any concerns. They agreed with staff. Their only question was if there is a development actually in review that has caused this. There is not. We are still just in initial conversations with the hospital. So, we feel it is appropriate at this time to make that change. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions before we open and close? I will make a statement that the, the hospital has been working with us, with you, with all of us. We meet quite often and talk about what we'd like to see in the hospital and they want our input. And I, I appreciate that, so I just want to make that mention. So, if there's no other comments, we'll open and close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. One of two motions.
Motion to make and accept the statements in Agenda packet that the text amendment is consistent with the vision Holly Springs Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 17-UDO-03 to change hospital from a permitted primary use to a permitted special exception use in the OR, Office Research and Development Park Zoning District.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Gen item 7D, sworn testimony, but no one signed up. Public Hearing 17 SEU-09, 17 DP-11, Sunset Lube and Tire. Matt Beard.
Good evening.
Great tie.
Thank you, sir. You'd like my socks even better. They've got little beer bottles on them.
All right, I'll go there. Nice.
All right, so here we are at Sunset Lake Commons. This is an existing Sunset Lube and Tire business. So, you will ask why are we here, if it's existing for special exception use. When they got their previous special exception use 10 years ago, the process was a little bit different. They, special exception use was run in the same kind of file as a development plan. They're separated out at this point for this very reason. If changes are being made to the, to the site and the project to alter anything that's listed in the special exception use, you have to go back through and get a new one, which is what we're doing here. So, the proposal is for an automotive repair minor in the local business district. Specifically, the alteration being made or proposed to be made to the building is to open up two of these garage bays on the front. So, as it currently sits, and we'll get to a, a photo here in a second. This is just a wall with parking, has windows and, and signs and stuff on it. But all of the bay doors are on the other side, the, the rear, with the pull-in location. And then they pull out and take the car around and park it for the customer. This would enable them to pull in and then immediately pull forward for the customer to pick it up. Parking that was lost as part of that new pull-through motion has been replaced in the drive-through lane here, as well as here. Any associated landscaping that's disturbed as part of that alteration has been replaced in the adjacent landscaping beds around the new parking. So, here is a rendering of what it would look like with the new garage bay doors placed on the front of the building. You can imagine that the existing just has this same pattern repeated over where that is. Planning Board recommended approval. There was discussion about the relocation of parking and whether or not they still met the parking requirement. They do. We also discussed the difference between automotive repair minor and quick oil change facility. We looked at some of the proposed uses and it extended beyond what we considered to be quick oil change facility.
What are those? Just enlighten us real quick.
So, any, Any kind of engine work beyond oil changes and tire changes. So, I mean, and, I mean, if you're changing light bulbs or wiper blades, that would also be fine in a quick oil change. But it would be,
Brakes or,
Yeah, yeah, brake jobs.
Transmission rebuilds possibly, or?
Transmission rebuild would be more in the automotive repair major category, which is limited to our industrial districts. But kind of heading that direction. And there was also a question of whether or not the opening of the front would increase the noise for any of the adjacent properties. The petitioner stated that it would not. And it does meet all of our development policies and ordinances. And the applicant is here if you would like to hear from them.
Any reason?
No.
Think we're good. Any further discussion before we open and close the public hearing? So, now we're going to open and close the public hearing. Further discussion? Two motions.
Make the motion to make and accept the findings of fact for special exception use petition 17 SEU-09 for Sunset Lube and Tire to allow for automotive, automotive repair minor in the LB Local Business District.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve special exception use petition Number 17-SEU-09 and Development Plan 17-DP-09 for Sunset Lube and Tire with conditions listed in Agenda packets.
Second.
I want to make a quick correction to that before you go. The DP number should be 11, as stated up in the corner.
DP 11?
Yes.
It's SEU-09. Got it.
Hey, Joni?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Got it.
All right. Second. What, second, okay. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Gen item A is the consent agenda. However, we were given a, a resolution for the Holly Springs Town Council to consent to the assignment of the license agreement dated May 27, 2015, to the Holly Springs Baseball Club LLC. Can we just include that?
Yes, sir. The, the agenda sheet was there to explain what was happening. And it's just transferring the existing license agreement from one LLC to another. And that resolution is just the text of it, if you had any questions. But it's,
It's in the agenda, just, this is it.
Yeah, that was just,
It's just included in.
That's right. The, the names of the corporate entities are on the agenda sheet, and that's,
Okay.
Feed of the, the substance.
Mayor Protam?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda as tweet.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
We've never had that before. Motion passing unanimously, thank you. Thank you. Agenda item nine A, Requesting Communication Certified Entrepreneurial Community Designation. Irina, you've been very patient tonight. Irina Kasanovich. And Anna Johnson, maybe.
So we are here tonight in front of you, before you, to share our newest achievement. Some of you have been with us last month when Holly Springs was certified as the first entrepreneurial community, and this program has been a year into making. We have gathered last September at the Bass Lake Retreat Center with a group of entrepreneurs, local entrepreneurs, as well as the service providers and some of the staff members, and some of them are here with us tonight as well, and they did stick with us for a whole year, and they're planning to stay with us in this process for another year or so. We have started at that time our journey to make our community to be entrepreneurial-ready. But honestly, our vision has started years before then. At the time, when we were developing the coworking concept and we were looking into recognizing the struggles that our downtown has had and that we were not able to bring any development downtown, we wanted strategically to place the coworking station in our downtown, which they are here, you know, with us as well tonight, and we had a great working relationship and partnership with them since then. It's interesting that in economic development, the most publicity is always given to the new recruitment. Every new company, new jobs that are created always get the front page in every newspaper. But what is often forgotten is that eighty percent of your jobs in your community are created by your existing industry, and we do feel that this program has actually brought our existing industry program on the whole new next level. We have recognized and witnessed the growing need and potential for collaboration between our existing businesses and entrepreneurs, and that is actually what made us look into this program, to be able to bring all of that under the same umbrella. I will now invite Ms. Crystal Morpheus to come and join us and just to tell you briefly about this program, what it is and what it entitles her to do.
Welcome, Crystal.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. Mainly, I want to just congratulate the certification team, really the whole town, for getting behind this project and putting in, like Irina said, more than a year's worth of work toward entrepreneurship. And it is a recognition that the majority of job creation comes from within a community, as Irina mentioned, from existing business, and an overwhelming proportion of your companies here employ less than ten people. They're small businesses. And so as Irina mentioned, even though oftentimes business recruitment receives the most attention, really the strategies to start your own business and grow businesses within are the most sound strategies in economic development. To give you a history and background of the Certified Entrepreneurial Community Program, it was started in the mid-two thousands by Advantage West, a regional economic development organization in North Carolina, and they certified eight counties, one town, and the Cherokee Nation. They tabled this program when the region's lost funding from the state several years ago. We were fortunate enough in our firm to purchase the program. We totally overhauled it and relaunched it, and Holly Springs is the first community to be certified in North Carolina under the new program. So it's quite a prestigious accomplishment for your team and for this community. The components of the program include a bringing together of action teams to support two entrepreneurial initiatives and to make significant progress in accomplishing goals laid out at those two initiatives, and you'll hear more about the two things that this team worked on. As the certification team, we monitored their progress on these two initiatives and made sure that they accomplished their goals. But it's not sort of an over and done sort of program. The Certified Entrepreneurial Community Program, in order to remain active, you have to continue to action plan and implement strategies to support entrepreneurs and to help companies start businesses. So it's about fostering synergies for long-term growth, and we really say it's a culture of no wrong door, where businesses, no matter what door they come to in Holly Springs, can receive support and assistance to get started and grow their business. So going forward, Irina and your team, your certification team, will continue to work on entrepreneurship initiatives, and I look forward to coming back next year and the following year to see the good things that you'll continue to do. I've been very impressed with the volunteers that you've had on this project team and their leadership, also very impressed with your economic development staff. So job well done. Look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions?
No, we've been putting a lot of hooks in the water. We've been catching a lot of fish. This is just one more hook.
That's right. That was a great presentation at Bass Lake, I might say, too.
Make sure Officer Laws hears my fishing analogy, okay?
Is he a fisherman?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
So, as Crystal mentioned, I really wanted you this evening to hear from our, actually, from our businesses, from volunteers who spent countless hours working on this. We, as the economic development, and, you know, thank you guys always for supporting our initiatives. It feels good to be first, and especially to be first in some exciting programs like this one. But I think it really speaks volumes to see all of these people sitting here patiently, and they have their running day-to-day business, and they're very busy, but they still do find time to come and work with us to make this place even better. So I would now, with further ado, invite two task leaders, that is Taylor Dolpe, who is leading a promotion and support, that's one of the initiatives that was recognized as a need for growth in Holly Springs during our team's vision meeting last September, and Mr. John Dolpe, who is leading the downtown development initiative here. So I will now invite Taylor to come and join us and talk a little bit more about what her and her team has done.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing?
I'm doing good. I will try to be brief because I know everyone's probably anxious to get out of here this evening and continue planning their Thanksgiving festivities. This is the link here?
Yes.
Okay. So our committee was tasked with the objective of finding ways to promote and support entrepreneurs in existing businesses in Holly Springs. Initially, we had some brainstorming sessions in an effort to narrow our focus as promote and support in and of themselves are two very large objectives and projects. A recurring theme that continued to surface during those brainstorming sessions was how difficult and overwhelming it can be as a business owner knowing where to go for help, especially when you're looking to start a business in a new area. So as a result of those discussions, we decided to create a wayfinding resource for entrepreneurs, and that's a place where entrepreneurs can go to find ideas or be directed to resources to help them start, run, or grow their businesses in Holly Springs. And one of the unique features of our site is that the info we provide has special emphasis on the great resources that most people don't even realize exist within our local communities. When you go out to Google, for example, and search for some information, you get everything in the world, and our site helps focus your direction into a smaller scope. So our website here is very simple. We are in the process. It is under construction. I'm just going to bring it up so you can get a taste of what it's going to look like. It's a very simple website. Our three main menus and options are going to be launch, run, and go. Launch is resources related to starting a business or operating a business in Holly Springs. Run will provide resources for operating businesses, and go will be things that business owners may want to do or consider doing in an effort to grow their businesses. What I'll do is I'll take you to one of these menu areas so you can see how it'll work. In the launch area, we have resources for starting a business, writing a business plan, funding financing, doing business in Holly Springs, and town initiatives. Starting a business, for example, when you go into each of the menu items, you'll see that we've created resources, for example, business by sell. Biz by sell is if you're looking to buy a business, this site includes listings nationwide, and they can click on these links. It will take them to other resources. Business Link North Carolina or Blink is an amazing resource that's available locally here. They're free resource, and they will help you start a business. They have amazing resources for forms, for example. You can go here if you need any of the forms that you need to start businesses, corporate forms, informing businesses, and all we're doing is trying to create links to resources that we have locally. And that's kind of it. I won't spend any more time navigating through the website. It is up. I'm not sure what I just clicked on. Yeah, we'll go back. There we go. And so you can navigate. The site is up. It is www.bizwhizhs.com. It is being under construction, and we are loading right now, so it is incomplete, which is why we've listed that on the front. We don't want people to be discouraged thinking there's not a lot of resources there available. Phase two, which will come later in the year, will be more of an interactive phase, which will contain calendars and links to events and things going on in the local community where people can go to professional development, say seminars on social media marketing or things like that at communities, for example, at the coworking station, at locations that are local within our community and surrounding areas. And that's it.
Questions or comments? Good program.
That looks like it's going to be an excellent resource just because of being able to access those forms that small businesses need to have to start for sales stacks or whatever.
Nice and clean and easy to navigate. It's cool.
Many thanks to Economic Development as well as the CEC team. It's a great job.
Good job.
And John Dolpe is also a owner of Rodney Science. I'm sorry, I missed to say that for Taylor as well, so. And I do want to just say something about that website. You know, we can sit all day long and assume or what is that that the businesses need, but when you have a group of businesses telling you exactly what the need is, I think that's exactly what the value of this program is, because it's them working on the resources that they need, so.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening, John.
Like Taylor said, turkey's getting closer, right? So I'll keep it short and sweet. What was interesting at the kickoff meeting for me is how loudly the group of entrepreneurs and support and town people, town staff, said, "We want a downtown." It was just, it was loud, it was clear. "We want a downtown." They said it over and over again. You've probably heard that a few times in all your various meetings here, and it looks like we're headed to having a vibrant, exciting downtown with the developments going on and the things that are in planning. What's really nice about that is what we did as a group is we tried to say, "How can we create excitement around a downtown? Around a village? How can we bring people into it so that they don't have to wait until it actually is built for them to come?" So we wanted to try to attract them to the downtown and create a series of events that would highlight downtown. And so we kicked that off by partnering with the Holly Springs Half Marathon, which was run last weekend, and we created a festival that would then, after the runners got done running through downtown and went and got their awards, would come back to downtown along with the rest of the citizens of the town and other people that were generally interested in having some fun that day, and come to downtown so that they could see and experience what a downtown that had businesses and restaurants and shops and things could possibly experience. So it's really exciting. We're really excited to have kicked off our first event and to build a boiler template so that we can do further events and continue to build around. As you build downtown up, we'll build the excitement and the people that want to come to downtown and experience it. And I think one of the most exciting things for me is I see the downtown beginning to develop, is that the people that are investing in building our downtown, our town, are people that live, work, and play here. These are our people. These aren't big outside investors coming from across the country. This is our folks that are investing and taking the risk in our own downtown, and we want to celebrate that and support that, and that's what this is going to do.
Awesome. On top of that, we forgot to do something. Today, or yesterday, I believe it was, the letters to Santa mailbox is now open for business, and thank you, and thank you for doing this last year. It's a great-looking mailbox.
Well, I also have to thank, then, since you mentioned that, is our work with partnership with Parks and Rec.
Absolutely.
And the Holly Springs Run Club has committed to running all those letters that the children drop off in the mailbox all the way to the North Pole so Santa can answer them.
Thank you very much. Good workouts. Thank you. Thanks, John.
And also thank you to the police department. We had, we really worked very closely with them as well as with the Parks and Recreation Department organizing everything with the race fest. I would just now quickly invite Anna Johnston to talk briefly about the year-two planning for this project.
She did a good job Saturday, too. She looked very official with her board hat, the whole nine yards, and going like this.
My green vest. I was in lime green.
Yeah, nice, John.
Oh, gosh. Just thank you guys for letting us present tonight to tell you about this. It's been, I was sitting in my seat, and I'm just super excited that we got here to year one, through year one with the row of people. So it's Taylor Dolpe, Chris Harrell, Stephen Chan, John Harrell, Baxter Walker, Kim Bolick is in the yellow jacket, everyone has been, Beth and Jerry, sorry. You guys, please stand to be recognized. What y'all have done in the volunteer hours that you've put in are amazing. Thank you. So as Crystal mentioned, we are not done yet. We still have a year left, and we will continue after year two, but within year two, we're going to do another planning retreat as we did in year one. It'll look a lot of the same, but we'll focus on the two initiatives that we already have and see how we can grow those initiatives even more into year two. We hope to welcome even more entrepreneurs and business leaders in our town to come in and join in these two initiatives. Also, as you can see on the screen, there is design already in place for road signs that will come into the entryways and be placed at the entryways of Holly Springs to show this great certification. So thank you guys so much.
We're just special. Thank you, Ms. Anna.
Thank you.
Can you hear from us, or do you have any questions?
Actually, you know what's special and significant about the business people that you just recognized here? I've been here long enough that I've heard from enough local business owners say, "I own a business here in town. What is the town going to do for me?" These folks here did the exact opposite. They're business owners, and they're doing something for the community, so they really need to be recognized for that. That's fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
No motions.
No motions.
Good deal. Agenda item nine B, new business, Duke Health Medical Office Gateway Feature Design. Sean, you're back.
All right. It was about a year ago that the Duke Health Medical Office was approved at the intersection of New Hill Road and GB Alfred Highway. That plan included a condition of approval that a gateway feature would be required at that intersection, and because we didn't have the design at the time, the condition was that it had to come back to town council for approval. So I have here from our Comprehensive Plan a list of all the various gateways that we've identified, and right underneath this large purple circles is the intersection of the bypass and New Hill Road. Over the past year or so, we've been working on our wayfinding sign plan, and that included a preliminary design for the town's gateway monument sign. a preliminary design for the town's gateway monument signs, which is in the lower corner here. So, we've been working with Duke Health on their design. We've shared this preliminary design that we have and asked them to be inspired by this design to create their proposed gateway feature. So, this is the location of where the gateway feature will be. The bypass is along the top of the screen here. This is New Hill Road, so Olive Garden is just on the left-hand side of the screen. So, the gateway, proposing a plaza with a stairwell right at the corner of the intersection to really capture the eyes of anybody that is driving south along the bypass. I mean, it will mimic the circular plaza that the Holly Springs Town Center Development put in as part of their gateway, required gateway feature for this intersection. In the bottom corner of the screen here, this is just an aerial photograph, just to help you visualize what is currently out there. Again, here's Olive Garden on the left-hand side of the screen. You can see Holly Springs Town, Holly Springs Town Center's gateway feature is this round plaza with landscaping and benches. So, it'll be right across the street from that feature. So, the proposal from Duke Health is to continue that pattern of the circular plaza with the benches, but also to take inspiration from the town's design, include some of the column features on a stairwell that will go down into the building, but also recognizing that the building itself, a three-story building with a prominent tower right at the intersection, also has some impact with that gateway feature. So, this is the proposal from Duke Health. And with that, if you have any questions on their design, I know they have some representatives here who can answer any questions for you.
Can you freshen my memory on how big that building is? I'm trying to remember myself.
It's about 48 feet. Seventy-two thousand plus or minus square feet, three stories, about 48, 49 feet tall, I think.
Looks impressive.
Yeah, I'd say my only suggestion is shade. I just want people to sit outside, as much shade as possible from what May to September, I think. But yeah, it looks nice.
Good point, yeah.
Did you want to hear from the Duke team at all?
Yes, no? I think we're good. I think we're good. Very exciting.
I make the motion to approve the draft design for the gateway feature at the intersection of NC-55 bypass, GB Alfred Highway, and New Hill Road for Duke Health Medical Office.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Welcome, Duke.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, guys. Agenda item 9C, new business, Twelve Oaks Infrastructure Reimbursement Agreement. Kendra Parish.
Good evening. I'll be brief. What's before you tonight as an extension for the Twelve Oaks Infrastructure Reimbursement Agreement? The agreement we first entered into back in 2012, and the completion of the Twelve Oaks subdivision was expected to be by December of 2017. They are just getting started on phase 10. There's about 190 lots left. And so, in speaking with them, they wanted an extension of 18 months. So, it's keeping all the terms of the agreement completely the same, just extending the timeframe to go out 18 additional months. The intent of the original agreement is still being met. We have termination agreements or expiration dates on these agreements to hold the developers accountable, but also to not leave it open-ended. So, extending this doesn't, you know, mean that they haven't met the intent of the original agreement. It's just to, it didn't go quite as fast as they had expected. They are definitely going full steam ahead out there now. They have just some statistical information. There's 936 total houses out there. Once we have the 190 additional lots, there will be just over 1,100 lots that are out there in Twelve Oaks. And I can answer any questions that you would like.
Questions to Kendra? What do you know about this? Next. Motion?
Motion to extend the infrastructure reimbursement agreement with land over in Twelve Oaks for 18 additional months.
Second. Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Kendra. Agenda item 9D, new business, Thales Infrastructure Reimbursement Agreement. Again, Kendra.
So, as you know, they, the Thales, the private school, they're going up right on New Hill Road beside the Hensley subdivision. The Twelve Oaks pump station treats or collects all the wastewater that comes down that area. And for years, we've had the New Hill Pump Station. You probably don't even recognize it as you drive by, but it's one of the oldest pump stations in town. And with the addition coming on, as you leapfrog up the basin, we're now going to have gravity line all the way down to Twelve Oaks. So, the New Hill Pump Station needs to be taken offline. They are just east, or the pump station is just east of the Thales site development. And so, when they came in early on and we were talking to them, they have to provide gravity sewer to the upstream property, which is our pump station site. And we talked with them about since their contractor was going to be on-site, we would like to take advantage of that and have their contractor demolish and abandon that pump station so that we could take it offline, which is an operation and maintenance cost savings long-term for the town. The agreement that is attached is to, the estimate that's expected is around $39,000. Once their contractor gets that demolished, we approve it, inspect it, approve it. There is language in the agreement that we could reimburse them up to 150% of that cost. And that's just to give us a little bit of cap. It's expected at 39,000. But if bids came in higher, or their contractor, we ran into rock, whatnot, we have given ourselves a little bit of leeway there. This money would be reimbursed from the sewer reserves that we have on file or in our bank account.
Question. Are they on schedule pretty much at this point? Do you know?
They are getting ready to have a pre-construction meeting.
Pre-construction?
Mm-hmm. They would have liked to have been sooner, I'm sure. Yes, yes.
Just checking. Okay. Questions to Kendra? One motion.
Motion to approve an infrastructure reimbursement agreement for the removal of one of the town's oldest pump stations.
Motion's been made in second. That's a new one. All favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes. And Kendra, please stay for a second.
Do we have to call in Capital Area Preservation since it's?
I know, right? Nobody's, nobody's fighting to keep this, are they?
They could make it a historic monument or something, you know? All right. Stay there for just a second, please. This is a quiz. First time ever in 16 years, you have to guess what the person is who's now speaking. Not me. I'm reading something. "Last night, I attended the American Council of Engineering Companies of North Carolina A C E C Awards Banquet. I thought we may get an honorable mention for the NC-55 bypass slash Avant Ferry Intersection Project. However, we walked away with the 2018 Grand Award of Engineering Excellence." Now, who might that have been? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
And there's a Department of 23 behind me that helped us get that award. I'm just up here.
Good job, good job. All right. Other business, that was part of it. I still go on crosswalk safety, and I think we're making some progress there still, again, still, forever, ever. Are you going to mention the safety thing?
Are you kidding? Absolutely. Unless you would like to.
I'm going to stop.
Okay.
All right.
Very proud of that fact.
Other, other business from anybody else?
Mentioned a couple items, if you don't mind. Just Holly Springs Half Marathon was fantastic this past weekend, and Race Fest was equally as fantastic, perfect continuation of the race. And yeah, food trucks and beer, no guilt after running that race.
How can you beat that, right? How can you beat that combination?
And to continue the theme, Suggly Sweater is coming up here in December. Price increase, November 27th, I think. So, keep that in mind if you want to go. That's another really fun race.
Get your sweater early. Okay?
I'm good. Good.
Just one other thing I was going to mention. Peter was very instrumental in doing this. Tonight also is a meeting going on at the school board, I guess is the way to put it. And on school assignments. And there's a lot of support for neighborhood schools. And we can go into all the details later on, whether you believe it or don't believe it, but there's some major advantages to neighborhood schools. So, we are on record, a lot of us, right, beat, a lot of us for supporting neighborhood schools. And I've gotten three results back or three emails back from the appropriate people, one of which was Jim Martin, who said, I think you saw it. He said, "I think we'll take a harder look at this because it came pretty fast." So, for those of you who say, "Well, why aren't we there tonight?", this is the answer, because we're here, okay? Also, managers' report, please.
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to recognize the police department and their outreach team. In keeping with the season, they delivered 50 frozen turkeys and some other perishable food items to 50 families that they feel like could really benefit from that. The, the food was, I believe, donated by the food cupboard, but our police department delivered, delivered those meals. So, wanted to recognize our guys for job well done, guys and gals. Thanks, guys. And then also, sort of on that same theme is, and I think I shared this with you today, and the mayor touched on it, we have been recognized as the safest town of over 30,000 in the state of North Carolina in terms of violent crime statistics. So, we're very proud of that, and I think proud of the work that our police department does, and also, I think, the residents of our community. That speaks highly of everyone. We're actually number, I said, we're number one in the state for towns' population of over 30,000. We're actually number four in the state overall. So, I mean, that's something we can be very proud of. So, just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday, Thanksgiving, and that's all I have.
Just one thing about that comment. Apex, oftentimes, the mayor of Apex, good friend of mine, says, "We're the peak of good living." Well, we talked about that today. And when he says that, I say, "And we're Holly Springs. We're just above the peak of good living." He hasn't said that lately. I don't know why. Counselor? I'm listening.
Motion to adjourn, then, sir.
All favor.
Aye.
Thanks for waiting. Happy Thanksgiving.